My pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gonna start with public hearing?
Correct.
And the more is second meeting.
So special town meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 16th. Greetings, in the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify anyone who votes as of the town of West Bath in the said county qualified by law to vote a town at bay as to meet at the West Bath Town Hall in the said town on Thursday, the 16th day of January 2025 at 5:30 o'clock in the evening, then and there to act upon the following articles set out to lift. Article one, to choose a moderator by written ballot to decide a said meeting. Two, shall the school board of directors be authorized to negotiate and enter into tuition contracts for grades six through 12 with nearby school administrative units for a term of two to 10 years and on such other terms and conditions as the school board of directors may negotiate in the best interest of the town and the students. Board of selection here comments yes. Any comments?
So I guess I have a couple of questions. As we are pursuing this and we look at, I guess, the cost of education for six through 12, are we also gonna take a look at the total cost for students? I had a couple of questions that I didn't yet to get that fully answered. And for transparency, I think we should look at a cost per every student pre-K through 12 to find out what the town and what is it costing to truly educate our students on an individual basis?
So this process would be for negotiation for the six through 12 students? So it wouldn't get to what you're asking about for the cost per student for K through 12? But it would be for being able to make sure that we can educate our six through 12 students? Since we do not have a school environment?
But can we get the cost? I mean, I don't know, I've asked a couple of times to get that and I still get...
I gave it to you four times Suzanne. You didn't like the answer, I gave it to you four times.
Okay, so I'll read what I put into record.
This is not at all your main of what we're here for today.
Well, it kind of is.
It's not.
We're talking about the cost per students.
We're talking about whether to negotiate terms.
Negotiate and do this through 12, so we're not talking about puberty through five.
But the cost per student.
But we'll certainly have an opportunity Suzanne through the budget process to have those conversations. And tuition should be coming out any moment now, so we'll be able to then have an updated figure on what the cost per student is, but they don't have anything different than what you already know.
We cannot negotiate the cost of tuition. That's a distinction.
I'm not asking for, I'm asking what is our true cost per student?
Okay, that's another question, that's not part of the more.
Well, to me it kind of is because we're looking at what we're gonna negotiate for grades six to 12. So that is a cost per student, on where we're gonna, on what school is going to go to and what they're...
What I said, and I don't think you've guessed it, is the tuition cost for six through 12 is determined by the state of Maine. That's not something we, as a school board, will negotiate.
Fine, I'd still like to find out what the true cost per student is. Not this evening, but I've asked multiple times and I haven't yet to get that answer back.
I gave my answer four times Suzanne. You did not like the answer, you disagreed with my calculation versus yours. I cited the numbers that are provided by the state, so it's uniform across all districts.
Well, the difference...
The way you calculated it is different than my number, I agree.
All right, we need to get back on task on what we're thinking here for.
There's a difference of a million dollars though.
So... Do you have any more comment from the public?
Are you looking, what schools are you looking at?
So this is the...
No, no, we haven't given them the authority to negotiate. They haven't looked at anything they can.
Right, the way the process works is that we have to be, the school board has to be given permission to negotiate through the town meeting process. And so that's where we are, right now is through the hearing and then the town meeting. If this is approved, then we're able to negotiate contracts. So after the town meeting, then the board gives me authorization to negotiate contracts with neighboring districts. And then I come back and present those contracts to the board and the board either approves them or doesn't approve them. Meanwhile, all the districts that we've also done the communications with, their boards have to approve them. And then that completes that process. But I can't do anything until we get to the point where we're able to negotiate.
Do you have, I presume you've got schools in consideration here and reach out to?
We do, and the board did give me authorization to investigate whether there be interest. And so I do know who there's interest from, but there's been no conversations on the what happens next because I don't have that authorization.
So who's shown an interest to date?
We've talked to our neighboring districts, who we've currently worked with.
Again, we're just here to give permission for the school to start this process.
I thought this was an information session though. I thought our next meeting was...
We really can't talk about cost and who's doing what though at this meeting. We can talk about the process.
Right, I thought that's what the point was.
But we can't get down to details because technically you don't have the right to even do that right now. So we don't, any information Emily's gonna give us is gonna be information she has from past contracts. It's not gonna be current up to date. So we are talking about, is this, are we gonna give the school board and Emily permission to go ahead and reach out and start this process? So if you have questions about the process, this is a great time.
That's what I thought it was. I thought what people didn't understand, so I thought it was a question. So it wasn't...
Because we're not voting yet. Yes, I'm just curious to what schools we pushed out to? I presume Bath, Brunswick, any other?
Right, our neighboring districts. I can't, like, so I only had authorization to check with our neighbors to see if they're going to be interested in pursuing negotiations. And the conversations then had to stop there because we couldn't even talk about any details of what if, we won't talk about it.
David?
The school board is elected by the town's citizens, elected officials. This is in their charge, so let's let them do the process. I move the question.
Any other questions? I don't want anybody not to be able to speak that has questions. We want to take a vote?
Yeah.
It's already, we already did both. Great, so make a motion?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
We'll see how it's handled.
Please hear it.
Yes.
Typically, how many people come in on the evening? Is this gonna be within us? I just wanna make sure because if you don't...
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
What is your pleasure with the more?
Thank you, I'm actually pretty comfortable.
I'll second it. All in favor? And also the approval of minutes for November 21st and December 5th.
I'm quick, I just have to sit up.
Make a motion if you can, Suzanne.
I second, all in favor? Next upcoming select board meeting, as someone has pointed out, is January 16th and immediately following a special town meeting at 5:30. Old business, discussion about we line the bath. On that, we were gonna set up a meeting...
I've been in contact with Mark from the city that, and he's gonna reach out to his attorney in sight lines. And Kristin said she's pretty much available anytime after the second.
After the second, so before next meeting, you should have a meeting?
I hope so, yes. I tried to get into starting the holidays there.
I know.
But Mark has responded very good.
Any other old business? Yep. New business, Hyatt Tax Collective Treasure.
So I reached out to the town attorney because we had a candidate from previous interview process for the town clerk, if we were able to still pursue them as a candidate. And she said so long as we had followed the traditional strategy of acquiring interest, that we could, that she was still a valid candidate if we wanted to pursue her.
So does that mean we need to post and...
No, we don't, that's not, so, and I'm trying, without saying the individual's name.
Right.
Were you, Keith was not part of that, we can certainly bring the individual back in for their interview, but were you comfortable with that candidate?
I was very comfortable, my concern is only to recall, that's higher practices. Should we post it and if she wants to apply again?
The attorney said we didn't have to, if we were comfortable with her. Now we can certainly bring her back in for an interview so that Keith can meet with her. I asked that very specific question.
I guess mentally concerned, and it's not insurmountable, it's the same as I had when we did the town administrator. It's a tough uphill battle when you're unknown to somebody without going through a process. I know times of the essence, we wanna get people in here. I guess the other part of that is, as far as I'm concerned, that's your hire. And if you're comfortable with that position, I certainly would give way to your recommendation.
I'm comfortable with that. As mine. So how do we, how do we wanna proceed with that?
So is someone gonna make a motion that Julie...
Communicate with the previous candidate?
All right, I move that our town administrator reach out to the candidate that previously interviewed for the town clerk and see if they are still interested in pursuing employment here as a tax collector.
You can try for...
I'm trying.
So I can ask him to come in with John and myself and go over the judge description, which needs to be updated, but see how she feels with it. Yeah?
Set holiday hours for 2025.
We have on the back of our...
In the back, you know this stuff, it's a calendar. It's on the back.
Right, right here?
Yeah. I highlighted the state holidays.
Hey, we've already used one this year.
So...
It still counts. It's not a free week.
So in the past, the day before Thanksgiving, we've worked until noon and then we had it off. I feel working till noon, close before we can get the money to the bank. That's why I say noon, because I usually close at one. But I think it would be good for the taxpayers.
Death access?
Yes.
So how many days are we looking to fill for this? Is it 10? Eleven?
13. Maybe 12, 13.
It was 13 on here, that is state holidays.
So the only one I would...
December 26th. Yeah, that's, I'm gonna say a last day.
And I was here Thursday and Friday after Christmas alone, which was fine. But it was very light. The only thing that saved me was getting the aquaphons reported.
We want the 24, but the 26 aren't. I don't think three days is...
Oh, I know, I think the 26 would be...
I think it's up to that. I mean, I'm not gonna tell them, maybe they wanna do more on Christmas Eve than the day after.
Well, if one of us wants to work a half a day, the other one?
Yep.
I think the day after. Because you come to work for a day and you're very confused what day it is? Because it's not Monday today, is it?
Not all week. Especially this week. So that's 14 holidays.
And we have to close the 24th Christmas Eve, but...
I just think most citizens don't leave that much time off and I really struggle with...
Yep.
And New Year's Eve.
I still say 99% of the workforce works on New Year's Eve.
Do you wanna make it a half day?
No.
Yep, okay.
Sorry, I'm just thinking about the citizens and I can't say most.
And the first won't be a stay home day.
So...
So I guess wouldn't we decide, are you adding the 26 as a full day? I just, okay. I move that we set the holidays of January 1st, January 20th, February 17th, April 21st, May 26th, June 19th, July 4th, September 1st, October 13th, November 11th, November 27th and 28th, and December 25th and 26th. That's holidays for the town of West Bath.
Is that good?
All day. Aquaphons reported.
Aquaphons have been reported as of 12:31, 10:00 AM under the wire. Everything has been reported.
What does that mean? They have accepted it or we've just put it in?
It's all been submitted and...
Finalized? I mean, was the, do they have to go and accept what we've submitted?
I don't believe so, they...
We just show them how we've done it?
We just submit everything and we have allotted every...
So how much are we over/under with our last?
$1,900.
Over or under?
Depending on over. Depending on the general...
Insulation, okay.
Okay, David, do you have a question?
Give me an answer.
Monthly reporting report here?
Given you multiple different reports. Separate revenue, a separate expense. There's some accounts open so you can see more detail. The fire, the roads. We discussed this back in June. And I also gave you the expense and revenue summary report that you always used to receive.
It's so long. We'll get...
I'm not sure if you would like one, a two, or all three.
So I think, what I, I think what I was looking for in terms of here was so that we knew if, let's say we had a million dollars in the middle of the budget and we completed three projects, what they were and what was allocated and where we were on, I'll say over/under even on those, to see what's remaining. I mean, that's kinda...
$70,000.
No, 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 that's just...
So like special road, it's on six, the last page of the expense.
Okay.
That's why I opened up the roads in the fire department because those two are...
Only thing that I think would be helpful for me is that we knew, like, when it says paving, what was paved.
Right. Yeah, can we open these up a little bit more? So under, and you mean on the contracts?
I can, and it will say who it's to and what was done.
Yes. So you, and that, so that we, not just for paving, but also for contracts on where we work for those and where we finish, I'll say over/under. So we have the change orders. What did that do to the project?
David?
I had asked in previous administrations, put that way. It'll be possible to email copies of these monthly to the budget committee.
We can do that.
Thank you.
So what we've asked for, is there something else that you're looking for in addition to what we just asked for?
I have the whole thing to look at, I'm not, I'll wait and see if they look like when we receive them.
So my concern too is like number five, patch, current budget $25,000. We haven't spent any of that. And I guess my, what I would want to know, what is the plan? Are we gonna use that money? What is the plan, especially as we get closer to budget?
I, if I'm thinking back to last budget sessions, that was put in there if need be, had to shim different roads if things happened. And if we didn't trim the roads before the hot outs, it wouldn't be spent.
It would just be nice because there's a few of those things, just so, we can't remember what, some things that we did three months ago, like we were just talking about something that we've all completely forgotten about. The best way to keep track and keep going is to have these things listed here. Why didn't we shim Foster Point? Is it a reason it wasn't done that month is left over rather than, or why did he go over culverts for $10,000, $8,000?
Well, the other thing is, so budgets still open. He has till June to use that money too. Right. So it's...
So what is his plan, you know, as a city?
It may be going forward, he's in the spring, he has plans for that too.
Yep.
Suzanne, the culvert was to replace one here, we had no idea was there.
Yeah.
We didn't know there was a culvert there until it washed out.
Yeah, and then, so that's just where, I mean, you know, and that's, not that I haven't made this 40 pages long, but...
So I can open that up?
Yep. I mean, most of this is gonna be under public works.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's where, you know, when you look at these, like, we still have 138,000, almost 139,000 paving, ditching.
And if you find a different account, dogs, if you want, open that, just tell me.
Like, so for tree trimming, I know there was a request for...
That's gonna be gone.
Yeah, there's a couple of roads that I heard from two different residents about trees.
So if you look on page four, this is part of the fire department, I opened him up a little more. So maintenance, you can see what it was for and who paid. That's what you want to see on roads as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Not a problem. But also I have Trio Web up and running, we're still running the reports.
How do you like it so far?
I like it.
That was...
It's just getting, well, after a couple of years of doing C book.
Is this rate up to date as of 31st?
Yeah.
So that's...
The, this does not include today's one.
I thought the abatements would be more than that, so...
So the abatements at the end of the year, I do one journal entry, so it's not a natural expense.
25? 30,000.
Well, that's from July 1st.
I still thought it was 8, a waterfall.
Well, there's several that haven't been done enough.
Yeah.
The waterfront's gonna be the walker. What, do we have, I thought we'd allocated money toward the abatements, have we not?
Overlay.
The overlay, it was like 105, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Was there a, call me Raymond, but I, so we still have money to cover the waterfront abatements, is my point. We're at 39 on 73 right now.
So that is up to date because there's no abatements on this one.
Okay. So fire department capital credit 7,000, what is, what is the... Page four. Page five, the second one.
That was, I wanna say June 22 audit adjustment?
Oh, these were these...
That one's from the fire department, not spent, goes into a scapping. So the, and same with the roads. And those two accounts are not updated because we have the hung on.
So where are we, any audits, speaking of audits, are these here?
They were here during 23 and I'm gonna call and beg and plead.
For 24?
Yeah.
I'll draw you down.
Any other questions for Julie?
No, I think this, I mean, I'd like to get back on track, these things on a regular basis.
So do you like the expense revenue report or these that are more detailed?
I like the more detailed. Myself, I don't wanna speak for opinions, but I'd like to see it broken up a little bit more so we know what was actually done in the roads, 456,000, what we did.
Can you add the percent column to the expense detail?
Or this is, I just ran this one this afternoon. I might be able to run this and open it up, but this is a summary, this is... I'll see.
It's easier to do a quick glance of the percent for me, but...
Anything is possible.
And can you add the, have the lights, you don't have to fill them, but the lights come all the way across?
I can export it to an...
Electric cells, but it just has the light.
Under shading?
Yes. Or the shading or even whatever, just so I can see.
I don't, I believe this is part of the new system, because that shading used to go all the way across.
Because it shows that we're, we've overspent engineering by $12,000. And we had, because there was engineering, see, we've got engineering listed twice under public works, we have engineering for $15,000 that was spent. And then we have it again listed under special projects. And it was over by 12030.
So the engineering, it could probably have supposed to have come out of general and nothing was added under the special project.
Okay.
But that's part of that project, so I kept it with the project. And I could easily do a journal entry to take it from there to there.
Well, it's either...
Going forward, if we're doing a project, we need to add engineering under that, not...
Well, because we have an engineer, we already spent $15,000 under public works and we allocated and spent 15 and then had an over of 12030.
Did we hire for one of the one project under engineering?
Or did we not include engineering in it? That's what I'm thinking.
I'm thinking during budget season, it was not included under this. But for history, if you're gonna go back and say, how much does that, did that project cost? I would look under special project only.
Yep.
I wouldn't go to general road. So my guess, things will look together. And back when I worked with the budget committee years ago, we separated it a little more.
Well, I mean, it should be, if there's more than one special project, we should list it all out as project A total, project B total, so we can see what everything is.
Yeah.
Any more discussion or?
No, I like it.
Yeah, we don't want anything.
Any public comments?
I'll say quit me.
Future agenda items?
I know we talked last meeting about the policies and you found many of them, maybe all of them. Are those approved?
Well, I sent on to Kristen. And some I have found that have been approved some. But not all of them.
Okay.
So Kristen's gonna go over them and plug away at them.
But there's also job descriptions, which I think falls all into that. And I, I know there's a line item under the tax collector treasurer who's responsible for personal property tax, which we didn't want to do.
Yeah.
And it's still in that, so we need to kind of go back through all of the job descriptions as well.
And there was also Robert's rules of order that I think we need to
Yeah.
adopt. Sometimes these meetings, you know, are not productive and sometimes select board and sometimes the public is out of order and I'm done having these meetings be raining fast. If it's not productive, there's no reason to have discussion around it. No, David?
I think one of the biggest issues is public comment is just for comment, not for a long debate about an issue. If that issue needs more time, it shouldn't be on the agenda for another meeting.
But again, when people get up and they say the same thing six times, 10 to 15 minutes each time, we don't need that. It's not productive. We, we've heard you, the other members of the public have heard you, so I really think we need to get back to those rules, Robert's rules, and we also need to be respectful of one another. I'm not to like one another, but we do need to respect one another. So my goal this year is I'm done with being disrespected. I'm done with the public being disrespected and if we can't be nice to one another, then. Do you think?
I'm sorry, I speak for.
No.
I think you accomplished that.
I think once a person has been told that they are out of order, they need to stop. If they can't stop, they need to leave. You get a side of the law? You know, if it comes to that, it comes to that, but I have not seen us get to the point of, yet. Needing a side of the law, and I hope it doesn't happen. I hope people are just reminded to be respectful of one another. It's a new year. Let's show a little kindness. Let's not beat each other up because what we're on this room, we all have a hundred things going on, on up there too. We have sick family, we have people who just lost someone. We don't know what's going on in people's life, and just to be kind, we'll change each other that. We don't have to beat each other up here. Have we made mistakes? Absolutely. Do we need to be beat up every time in a, in a tongue lash? And we know we made mistakes. We're trying to undo that.
Have we already done public comment?
You can go right ahead and say something if you want.
I don't know how you do it, but the discussion you guys just had about all the money and all this stuff, other than David who's familiar with all this, I couldn't comment, I couldn't ask an intelligent question. Is there some way when you're getting ready to have that kind of discussion that there could be some summary information available to people who come and sit in the public?
I think this is all public information and I don't see why we couldn't.
I, I think what we're trying to do is pick a format this evening on what we wanted to see versus really what was being discussed.
Okay.
I don't mean, I understand where you're coming from, with the three different formats that we're looking at.
You're trying to work out an improved format for.
For anyone to see.
Yes. I understand that.
Think the way it is we're in, you may have more questions. So if we can get it to the point where
It makes sense.
it makes sense. And then you can ask those questions that are gonna help us.
Yeah.
You should make it dollars, not cents.
Same dollars.
I know in the past they had the packets on the website before the meeting. We're trying to get back to that. They had their notebooks this week.
Make progress.
Hey, I, I, I encourage you to continue to make this kind of progress.
Thank you.
Yes.
Julie's gonna whip us into work.
Thank God. Think I'm high on this now.
So Julie, in this job description, is this you need, this is the kind of meeting we make edits to?
Correct.
Um, okay.
Any other future agenda items, parts about policies?
Well, I guess if Julie has interest from the candidate for the tax collector treasurer, we should maybe put that on her, on where we are in that, or do we need to go back out and post?
I can meet with her next week and see what she thinks and if we need to.
And if you think she's a good candidate, I wonder if we need to read out to Christie again to make that proper?
Yeah.
Do the whole contract and.
I think we should, then I would encourage us to look at the job description that's in here and put edits to that so that can become the official job description.
I would suggest that we ask Julie to do that because she helped out this week and she knows what.
Should it, shouldn't be in it.
Exactly. I don't think we should be doing it. I think.
I think we need, I say all job descriptions.
I agree.
We have an expert in the room, so she can add it and we can look at it and see what we have.
But I think we should perhaps have this finalized, have that conversation with the candidate if it's moving forward. Even if we have to have a meeting between now and then.
I don't see it that much, I think. I think if we can get it done by Friday, I don't see it being huge.
Yeah.
Luckily, we're in the.
Unless there's a training around.
And if I bring it up that this is gonna change. There's things in hand that.
Yeah, there's, I was looking at.
And then maybe new duties added.
I don't really see us, do things quickly and make some of the mistakes we made in the past. I would just.
I do wonder though if it makes sense if Julie, if that candidate, candidate's not interested?
That is not.
Is that we just, how do Julie can post the position?
Yep. I move, I move that should the candidate were considering no longer be interested, that Julie post the position.
Second.
On David?
That always gets the process.
It does.
Yeah.
If this person is, they are.
Okay.
And if we know of any trainings coming up also, I mean, there's a few in part between.
Speaking of that.
DSA has funded a training that he needs to take.
Yes.
I'm not throwing it in the box.
Before I can do it.
Elected officials, yeah.
You can do it online.
Zoom.
Oh, we can do it online now?
It's a Zoom. Yeah.
The 23rd?
January 23rd, I do believe. I can double check and I'll let you know before I sign you up.
Thank you.
I think, can't you just do it online, online? I think you just go in and do it.
Yeah.
No, that's written in the information map.
I'm trying to think from last, last meetings, I don't see anything that would stand for that.
So the tax assessor will be in that next meeting, okay? Should we have him talk to us about what the plans are for the waterfront? And the abatements that are on the horizon?
If he has, I, I will know before.
Yes, but I'm thinking if we have, if we've got the, we put $105,000 in the overlay to cover the abatements, we haven't touched the waterfront really. We dabbled in it, not really addressed it. Is that something that we should?
I can.
Start during the slow season, as they put it.
April 1st is coming up.
That's right, this is the slow season.
I can check.
Fortunately, there's not a lot of snow to prevent us.
Can we say that now? Now I know. It's not you, Kathy.
No.
Snow, slow. Thanks a lot.
Any other future agenda items that we can think we have it from now?
I guess if we know what, if Kristen's got any feedback on the policies and job descriptions and things, if she's already looked at it, so that we can.
She wasn't giving back until today. But she will look at.
So set up that meeting with Kristen and Mayor, our town manager from.
Ma, yeah.
And then you and I need to set up a meeting.
Hmm?
As soon as possible.
Yeah. I'm just waiting here for Ma, for dates.
Select board comments and announcements, Julie makes me say this every time, dark registrations are available.
As of January 1st, you're in arrears.
No, uh, 31st, you have the $25. February 1st, $25 late fee.
Versus your $6 registration.
Correct.
Is that?
Any other records on extra payments? Besides registering your dollar?
I think we're good. I like the report. I'm gonna go back and track with it.
Yep.
Second.
Does it like that?
Oh, we should make our, our stuff out, Julie the notebook out.